Calling to order the city caucus meeting for Monday, August 14th, 2023. We have one public hearing this evening if the clerk would please read.
Public hearing number one, establishing a six-month moratorium on the submission and processing of building permits, certificate of occupancy, certificate of use, and land use approvals for smoke shop, vape shops, and tobacco or vape consumption businesses within the city of Schenectady.
We have eight items for original consideration if the clerk would please read item number one.
Item number one for final consideration, an ordinance pursuant to section 101 of the second-class cities law abandoning a portion of Larch Street.
Discussed in committee with objection on consent, item number two.
Item number two for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with New York State Division of Criminal Justices to secure give grant funding.
Discussed in committee with objection on consent, item number three.
Item number three for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with New York State Division of Criminal Justices to secure research and evaluation grant funding regarding the community hiring panel.
Discussed in committee with objection on consent, item number four.
Item number four for original consideration, a resolution revoking the appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for the construction of the Capital Region Aquatic Center as authorized by Resolution 2022-214 and amended by Resolution 2023-029.
Discussed in committee with objection on consent, item number five.
Item number five for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Carol Riggi.
Discussed in committee with objection on consent, item number six.
Item number six for original consideration, a resolution recognizing 2023 Black Business Month.
This item will be taken out of order and presented by Councilman Williams. Item number seven.
Item number seven for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 677 to Herbie's Burgers for a sign with accent lighting and an awning that will overhang the city's right-of-way at 175 J Street.
Discussed in committee with objection on consent, item number eight.
Item number eight for original consideration, a resolution awarding the bid and contract for the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course Irrigation System installation base bid and add alternate number one to George E. Lee Company in the amount of $3,352,934.21.
Discussed in committee with objection on consent. If there's nothing more to come before the city council caucus, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Move for Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Williams, all those in favor? We are adjourned. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Monday, August 14th, 2023. And I'd like to call on Pastor Mark Thompson for the prayer invocation.
Eternal God, our Father, we thank you again for the favors of this day and how you've blessed us and kept us. Father, we thank you for the reason why we are called here today, taking care of the business of the city of Schenectady. We give honor to the mayor of this city, Councilman Porterfield, all those elected officials and everyone in their respective places. Father, we pray that you bless them and grant them your wisdom as they might be the stewards of this city, Lord God, the caretakers of this city, and the servants of the city. Father, I ask a special blessing upon each of them as they lay things aside to do the business of the city. Take care of the things that they've laid aside while they are here to do your business. Father, be, grant your wisdom, grant your provision, and grant your leadership in this place. Father, last but not least, we send our hearts and prayers out to the people in Hawaii right now who are suffering great loss. We'd act that you would be with them as you are here with us. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
As Councilwoman Patrick Delius in the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. If the clerk would please complete the roll call.
Luke Taveran is absent, Mr. Toro.
Here.
Mr. Farley.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Patrick.
Here.
Mr. Palamini is absent. Ms. Porterfield?
Here.
Thank you.
Hold on one second. Oh, thank you. I think it's ours. Ours, okay. Okay. Yep. Okay. I'd like to ask the clerk to read any communications and petitions.
Communications presented to city council for Monday, August 14th, 2023. Under official, there were none. Under general, there was an email from Emily Trayforos in opposition to a proposed bill in Congress to raise the federal weight limit of heavy trucks on the nation's roads. Under petitions, there was a petition of 22 signatures for sidewalk improvements and Special Assessment District on McCullin.
Thank you. Ask council members for any committee reports. We do have one public, I'm sorry, we do have one out-of-order resolution. And we ask Councilman Williams to present that. And we'd ask those from, we have Asia Priest, Unique Priest, Mrs., if you could join us behind the rail. Mrs. Thompson. Yaya. Kenneth Brooks, if Kenneth is here, and Tanika Smith.
Beautiful, beautiful. But before I begin, I'd like to first say how privileged and honored I am to be presenting this resolution to you all today and to all the other businesses that have not joined us tonight. May I have the floor?
You may.
So I'll be presenting a resolution recognizing the 2023 National Black Business Month. Whereas Black Business Month is celebrated in August, it is a time to acknowledge and appreciate black-owned businesses across the nation and all that they represent in the country's continual striving for diversity and equality. Black Business Month provides an opportunity to focus on a community that is far too often underrepresented when it comes to access to capital and opportunities to build wealth. And whereas the history of Black Business Month can be traced back to the year 2004 when engineering entrepreneur Frederick E. Jordan partnered with the president and executive editor of the scholarly publishing company E-Access Corporation, John William Templeton, to start this annual event, their intention was to drive the policy agenda affecting the 2.6 million African-American businesses in order to highlight and empower black business owners everywhere, given the continued challenges faced by black business owners. And whereas since the late 1700s, both free and enslaved black people began to open their own small businesses from barber shops to tobacco shops and shoemaking, as emancipation grew, so did the establishment of black-owned businesses. And this led to the period between 1900 and 1930 being labeled as the Golden Age of black-owned businesses. And whereas this historic annual event provides a chance for consumers and proprietors to not only support black businesses but provide them with a platform to grow their enterprises and build wealth for current and future generations of African-Americans, celebrating the contribution of black business owners and entrepreneurs pays homage to them and their legacies. And celebrating this month recognizes the importance of black-owned businesses when it comes to contributing to the nation's economy as well. And whereas the value of entrepreneurship has long been a major influence in the black community, today approximately 10% of all American businesses are black-owned. The primary sectors in which black-owned businesses operate include healthcare, social work, repair and maintenance, beauty salons, restaurants, barber shops, arts and entertainment, and the list continues to grow. And whereas Black Business Month ensures that black-owned businesses get the recognition and patronage that they so richly deserve, especially those that are struggling to stay afloat, celebrating black-owned businesses empowers more people from the African-American communities to dream big and begin their own entrepreneurial journey. And whereas when you choose to support black-owned businesses, you are supporting black pride, unity, and couche de jocalia or self-determination. Black entrepreneurship is a tool for survival. Now therefore be it resolved that the Schenectady City Council and Mayor Gary R. McCarthy do hereby pause in our deliberations to recognize Black Business Month in the city of Schenectady and encourages all residents to support black-owned businesses in the city of Schenectady, the Capital Region, and at every other opportunity. I'd like to move the resolution.
Need a second? Second by Mr. Farley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, the motion passes. Um, yeah, no.
Yep. We're so excited, no? And please, please, I would love for you all to share some words of encouragement and also of your journey if you wouldn't mind.
Hello, everybody, I'm Asia Priest. This is Unique Priest and Kaheem Priest, we are accepting this award in regards to our brother DJ Ketchup and Ketchup Enterprise, which is us. We are Ketchup Enterprise, we are black business, we are Schenectady, and we want to say we're thankful for the recognition that you're giving us, and we just strive to do better for our community and for the ones beneath, you know, underneath us that are looking up to us. And we're just appreciative that you guys have taken this time to pass this, and we love you, thank you.
Truly, I think it's an honor and a privilege to be able to stand here and represent little old Yayas located in the city of Schenectady at 135 Broadway. And I truly think the council, and I thank the mayor for recognizing that Yayas, a mom-and-pop business, a black-owned business, for this area for such a time as this, is able to still be standing after seven years. I think it's a wonderful thing that we're doing down there, and I, and I just think my team, my team is here, so I think, and my husband, who's my biggest supporter for Yaya's house, I appreciate, and I really, really thank you for the.
Thank you so much, city of Schenectady. My name is Kenneth Brooks. I represent Community Fathers, Ground Up Landscaping, Cuts &amp; Blends Barber Shop, and OIOI, which stands for occupations instead of incarceration. That's a program we started with Community Fathers because when I was a youth, what kept me out of trouble was gaining self-worth and being able to help out and feed my family, help my mom, help my sisters, help my siblings. So I knew that that was the opportunity, and that's what I wanted to do with my life, to provide that same path for the youth that follows me. So there's one youth who's not here who works with me, his name is Yaya Yassir Washington. He actually became my youth because he was appointed to me as like, you know, a big brother because he was getting in trouble in school. So it started from me going to his house under a mentorship to him being one of my finest, best workers, he's like a son to me. And my operations manager, David Cooper, he's not here, that's my childhood friend, we've been friends since we was 12 years old, we came from a group home. So the support of the city, the family, the non-for-profits in Schenectady, the mayor, the people of Schenectady, the city of Schenectady, supporting my business and supporting me and bringing me to where I am today. There's David Cooper, operations manager, right there. Thank you. My business would not have grown through trials and tribulations, through, you know, pluses and minuses, with the support and the help and the love of everybody in this room, everybody in Schenectady, I was able to grow and be successful, and I appreciate everybody, thank you.
My name is Tanika Smith, I'm with Kitchen Love, and Kenneth is my fiancee. I say with a good team, you can get anything done, and I think that's what Schenectady is, a great team to have access to everything that we need in order to grow, in order to do, in order to give back. You can have any lemonade stand, it's my cliche verbiage, but to know what it takes to do that, and the lemon, how much they cost, and how much that support you need from the community in order to be able to sell, is definitely a difference, and I thank you, Schenectady, for allowing me to do that and give back, because it's not just about being here, it's about giving back also and teaching the youth as well. But thank you so much.
Can I say one thing? There is one black-owned business that's here that's not standing up, and I just want to appreciate her because she's a wonderful person, and that's Evandy Line, that's Pauline Saunders, and she has a black-owned business. And I just wanted to recognize her myself.
Mr. Simpkins, could we grab a group picture?
[inaudible]
All right. And everybody, everybody get your stage.
One second, one second.
Beautiful, beautiful.
We have one public hearing this evening, and just a reminder that we've extended the public hearing, public comment hearing time to four minutes, and I also respectfully ask that the first people speaking only speak to the topic of the public hearing. Public hearing number one. Establishing a six-month moratorium on the submission and processing of building permits, certificates of occupancy, certificates of use, and land use approvals for smoke shops, vape shops, and tobacco or vape consumption businesses within the city of Schenectady. I have four people signed up to speak. The first person is Jeannie Orr.
Good evening, my name is Jeannie Orr, I'm a Schenectady County resident and a program manager for Capital District Tobacco-Free Communities. We're a New York State Department of Health-funded program that covers Schenectady, Albany, and Rensselaer Counties. And our goal is to improve the health of our communities by creating environments that decrease exposure to secondhand smoke, that support smokers who want to quit and prevent young people from ever starting, because we know that tobacco is still the number-one cause of preventable death and disease. As you consider a moratorium on vape and smoke shops in the city of Schenectady, I wanted to provide you with some facts. According to the Surgeon General, there's overwhelming evidence that the more young people see tobacco, the more likely they are to start smoking. Tobacco companies spend a half-million dollars every day aggressively marketing tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, in stores throughout New York State with colorful walls of tobacco products, special discounts, and other marketing materials, all of which are highly appealing to youth. In Schenectady County, the amount of tobacco marketing that residents, including young people, are exposed to depends on where they live. We graphed the density of tobacco retailers in Schenectady County by zip code and observed a very obvious trend. I have graphs here that I can distribute to you afterwards, but you will see on this graph that the zip codes with the highest poverty rate, 12304, 05, and 07, have the highest density of tobacco retailers. Compared to Niskuna, which has the lowest poverty rate, Hamilton Hill, with the highest poverty rate, has more than five times the tobacco retailers per capita. We also looked at where these tobacco retailers are located within the various zip codes. Specifically, we looked at how many were located within 1,500 feet of a school. In Schenectady County, of the 173 licensed tobacco retailers, 53, or 31%, are within 1,500 feet of a school. In the city of Schenectady, 41 of the 111, or 37%, are within 1,500 feet of schools. Hamilton Elementary School has 10 licensed tobacco retailers within 1,500 feet of its property, the most of any school in the county. And we also looked at smoke and vape shops that are separate from just regular licensed tobacco retailers, which include convenience stores, and they, we found that five are located within 1,500 feet of a school. And in the spring of 2019, our staff held four neighborhood conversations with 40 residents living in the city of Schenectady. And one of the questions we asked participants was whether they thought limiting the number of tobacco retailers in the neighborhoods would make a difference. And here's some of what we recorded in their own words. Kids shouldn't see tobacco marketing. I want my babies, I don't want my babies to start, I think they should take it out of the neighborhood's cold turkey. If kids don't see it, they're less likely to start it. I think the harder it is, if you gotta walk them out to get it, you might think about taking that walk. We also asked what these Schenectady residents want to see less of and more of in their communities. And again, in their own words, they said, "Less bodegas selling bootleg cigarettes." Corner stores look mostly abandoned there, more cigarette choices than candy. Everything that's killing us in our neighborhood, they want to see less of. Put a cap on the number of stores selling tobacco. They wanted a real neighborhood with everything you need in one place, a good park in Hamilton Hill. Things for kids to do, basketball courts, fields, pool, recreation center, positive things. More stuff for families to do. It deters young people from smoking when they take care of themselves. We released a full report in 2020 detailing our conversations, along with the data around tobacco marketing in Schenectady. This report titled "Addressing Tobacco Use Health Iniquities in the County of Schenectady" is available on our website, smokefreecapital.org. And I could also send you a link along with the data I just mentioned tonight. Please feel to contact me In middle school, I was in advanced math class with a boy who was smart, kind and motivated and we were very good friends. However, he began to hang out with a group of kids who were vaping. I expressed my concern to him about the issue, but he brushed it off because vapes aren't as dangerous as cigarettes. Within less than a year, I watched him become addicted to his vape, drop out of advanced classes, get suspended, and then he even began selling vapes himself to other middle schoolers. My other friends and I watched helplessly as he lost interest in life and closed himself off from us. But what were we supposed to do? He was in too deep and he wouldn't listen to a word we said. For that old friend of mine, the spiral continues, he is still vaping today, years later. Addictions are hard to break and he's just a kid. The way that vapes and other tobacco products are marketed often targets young people and disturbingly resembles candy. Packaging is bright and colorful and the products come in flavors such as strawberry, watermelon and blue raspberry. Such flavors and products you could also find, or packaging styles you could also find in the candy aisle. This marketing tactic only feeds into the narrative that for years has been spread by tobacco sellers that vapes and other form of tobacco are less dangerous than cigarettes. Though in some cases, this might be true, vapes in particular still contain dangerous chemicals that can still kill you. These harmful drugs are for most very accessible, seeing as they're found in gas stations and corner stores that are within walking distance from schools and homes. Regulating the retailers of tobacco and vape products, along with the advertising and paraphernalia of these products, could expose less to the manipulation of marketing tactics that trick people into believing that they're safe. And hopefully, there will be yes, less young people like my friend who became addicted to nicotine at such a young age. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Raque Caldwell, hope I got your first name right.
Hello, everyone, my name is Ruthko Caldwell. I live and also reside in the city of Schenectady. Well, I'm sorry, I live and also work within the city of Schenectady, my apologies, I'm very nervous. So basically, um, I was raised in a family with, basically smoking, with nothing but smokers within my family. Um, my mother smoked, my father smoked, my grandmother smoked, my great-grandmother smoked. Um, and due to the fact that cigarettes were basically a norm within my family, uh, I bought my first pack of cigarettes at the age of 18. Less than 10 years later, I, I was diagnosed with a pulmonary embolism, which I had a clot in my lung. At the time, I had one choice, which was to con- stop smoking and be there for my ki- my, my children, my four daughters, um, which I did. And, you know, I'm here today just to, just to advocate for individuals like myself, um, that experience a hardship from smoking, uh, tobacco products. Um, and also, I'm hoping that, you know, my story can make a change or a difference in someone else's life. Also, you know, as I said, I'm a mother of four, so showing, sorry, I'm a mother of four and it's very important for me to be the change that I, that I, that my family need, basically the generational chain breaker. Um, you know, I thank God that I'm standing here today. Um, years ago, I woke up coughing up blood and I had no choice but to live for my kids and, you know, especially like in regards to the, well, at that time, I was a menthol smoker, you know, now they have other flavors of, of tobacco products, you know, which it's like, it's just, you know, it's just horrible and I, you know, I'm just here today just to tell my story, um, and, you know, thank you guys for your time, sorry.
Thank you. P D Vorus.
I'm just going to talk about the practical side of this because I've been listening to the committee meeting and you all know what you're going to be facing. There are people already participating in some of these venues, uh, smokeless cigarettes and all those different forms, I'm just not that acquainted with it, but I know they're around and I see people using them and thinking, I've heard that there's even like a hundred different flavors and peanut butter's still king. But anyway, um, you know you're going to run into problems with people who have been doing this for their lifestyle, their income. And so practically speaking, you've had very good discussions about what's going to happen, you know what's going to happen. There are going to be people who are going to come forth and present it to the city. I mean, it's just like Mr. Kosher with his plastic straws. Nobody's arresting stewards for plastic straws. But anyway, um, yeah, there's gonna be a lot of contention and section, number five, section one says there will be exceptions. So right there, whatever you say is going to ha- give, uh, the onus to those with exceptions and, uh, there's a payback for it. Uh, I think there may even be a remuneration for embarrassment and, uh, it depends on how far you go with this, uh, whether you actively participate in stopping people from participating in the buying of these things. I wouldn't want to be the one to walk up to somebody who wants to do business there and start chastising them about what they're doing, so. But you've had some very good discussions on this, you know it's gonna be a big problem and what's government for.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public hearing, um, I declare the public hearing closed. Ask for approv- I ask for approval of minutes for Ju- July 24th, 2023. Moved by Mr. Williams, second by Ms. Patrick, all those in favor? Aye. This time we'll have privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I see three people signed up to speak. Uh, the first person, Neil Goleb.
Thank you, it's my pleasure to be here today. I would just say to everybody sitting up front, it's very hard to hear you speak and it comes through in a very garbled way in the back, so I would suggest people try to project themselves. I want to talk about the, uh, Aquatic Center, which is being planned for Schenectady. About a year ago, the lady who was heading up came to me and asked for my opinion and I thought I liked the idea very much. We're patterning it after Greensboro, which has had an enormous impact on their business community. And the message I want to deliver to all of Schenectady is that the benefit of the Aquatic Center, which would be built in, in Rotterdam because it's the only place available, all of the benefit in business will come to Schenectady. Hotels will be loaded, restaurants will be loaded, businesses will be, will be benefiting from it. We've seen in Greensboro, you know, 120,000 people coming into town over a period of time. Greensboro has benefited so dramatically from having the Aquatic Center in town that we should take a very close look and before Schenectady says, "Well, that's not us," recognize that the major business economic benefit will accrue to Schenectady, New York because all of our restaurants and all of our hotels and all of our entertainment is downtown and all of that comes back to us. So please consider your decision about supporting it very carefully. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. P D Vorus.
Well, again, let's see, um, number two, you're taking in $481,687 and number three, you're taking in $49,977. The, uh, county legislature last week took in one and a quarter million dollars, so keep trying. Uh, also, um, regarding the award, the ceremonial reward, there's, uh, I went to a meeting the other night about zoning from A to X, Y and Z were left off. Big things are gonna happen in Hamilton Hill, huge, it's just starting and you didn't even speak to the, address the person that started it all about a year or two ago, when the, y'all got together on the properties up there and there's, uh, new rentals, huge rental spaces up there. So if you really want to see something that's challenging and, uh, go back to the zoning meeting, uh, committee meeting on A, A through X, no Y and Z. So there's a project going to start there that'll employ a lot of people from someplace and for several years to come. I drove every one of those addresses the other day and saw reptiles, rodents, just, it was scary, very scary. I saw things up there that should be fine and they have gone to seed. Uh, there's somebody, your bus was up there, I took two pictures of your bus. Uh, the Boys Girls Club, it's a mess. Burrell Park, third time I've been, I've seen renovations here. The first time, they surrounded the court with fence for basketball. The second time, they went and redid the, the, uh, field room and the bathroom and put fences around that. Now all of it's been demoed and they're going to have a splash park. So think on these things. And also the money being used for the golfing. I think to play at a municipal golf course costs $1,500 a year, a year to play there as a member of the municipality, extraordinary. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Cheris.
How are you doing? Thank you for having me and allowing me to speak this evening. I want to speak on the resolution that allows the city to enter into contract, New York State Division of Criminal Justice to secure the regarding grant fund, uh, that is with the Community New Hire Panel. I just want to say thank you to all of the council and the mayor for considering going into contract with, um, CDG to get the con- the grant money for it. For those that don't know what the new hire panel does, uh, it vets all of the young officers that want to come into SPD. So it is one of the initiatives that we started, um, that allows us to work with SPD to Chief Clifford and the other sergeants there that have sit in to, um, bring in a, a group of young officers that actually want to be a part of this city. Uh, for those that didn't get a chance to go down to the Community Father Event this weekend, you've seen a lot of plainclothes young officers that decided to frequent it on their off day, uh, something I haven't seen in the city in a long time. So I just want to, um, make sure that everyone understands the importance that this new hire panel does as we bring in officers that actually want to be a part of the city, want to police properly, not over- police our communities and want to be community members. Uh, one of the officers, and I, I, I don't want to use his name because I did speak to him, he doesn't like credit, but he received five merits for exceptional, uh, duty on just recently. That is one that came through, one of the first that came through the new hire panel. Uh, so this is something that we take very seriously, the people that we are vetting and I hope that the council, um, you know, takes it very seriously when they vote on getting the grant to continue to work with the Community New Hire Panel. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else to speak, so I declare the public comment of, on the legislative agenda closed. I'll ask for approval of the legislative consent agenda. Moved by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Farley, all those in favor? We have, uh, privilege of the floor on general city business and I have three, four people signed up to speak. Edmund Laven.
Good evening. City of Ethics, New York Board of Ethics, City of Schenectady, New York Board of Ethics. We explained to you at the meeting, June 27, 23, the City Ethics Committee has a statutory or prescribed charge and that your complaints do not fall within the scope of our jurisdiction. We have also received your follow-up letter on July 14th. The appropriate forum to address criminal complaints, it is certainly not the appropriate forum to seek redress for alleged moral failings. It's an ethics committee. That is what an ethics complaint is about. Did Falotico write the complaint forum? This was from Father Dominic Isopo. My ethics complaint is that I have appeared at city council meetings a minimum four times and complained of Judges Frost, Falotico and Hoffman depriving me of my constitutional rights. The mayor and council members have done nothing. They have all sworn in their oath of office to protect the laws, protect the laws of the Constitution. Ethically, they ma- all must act. My complaint against these three corrupt judges is obstruction of justice and treason. It is the same complaint I am making now against the mayor, who refuses to meet with me and all council members are guilty of obstruction of justice. The mayor is to enforce all laws in the city of Schenectady. Obstruction of justice is considered a crime against justice itself. By obstructing justice, one is seeking to thwart the process of justice and the operation of the justice system. The mayor must meet with me and he must act on my complaint. Doing nothing and not meeting with me is not ethical, but it is a crime. If the mayor or city council members are brought to crime of treason perpetrated by a judge against a citizen to the city council meeting, what is the civic duty of the mayor and city council members? The civic duty of the mayor and city council members is to ensure that the judge is held accountable for their actions. They can do this by reporting the judge to the appropriate authorities and by taking legal action against them. The mayor and city council members can also work to ensure that the judge is removed from their position if necessary. It's important for them to take action in order to protect the rights of citizens and uphold the law. When a citizen reports a crime of obstruction of justice and treason committed by judges against a citizen, the law enforcement official is required to investigate the matter. The official will take down the details of the complaint and may ask for supporting evidence. If the complaint is found to be true, the official will take appropriate action against the judges. In addition to the constitutional violations, the Department of Justice prosecutes laws, law enforcement officers for related instances of obstruction of justice. This includes attempting to prevent a wit- victim of or witnesses from reporting the misconduct, lying to federal, uh, state or local officials during the course of an investigation into potential misconduct, writing a false report to conceal misconduct or fabricating evidence, or keeping my ethics complaint out of the newspaper.
Thank you. P D Vorus.
Doing nothing and not meeting with me is not ethical, but it is a crime. If the mayor or city council members are brought to crime of treason perpetrated by a judge against a citizen to the city council meeting, what is the civic duty of the mayor and city council members? The civic duty of the mayor and city council members is to ensure that the judge is held accountable for their actions. They can do this by reporting the judge to the appropriate authorities and by taking legal action against them. The mayor and city council members can also work to ensure that the judge is removed from their position if necessary. It is important for them to take action in order to protect the rights of citizens and uphold the law. When a citizen reports a crime of obstruction of justice and treason committed by judges against a citizen, the law enforcement official is required to investigate the matter. The official will take down the details of the complaint and may ask for supporting evidence. If the complaint is found to be true, the official will take appropriate action against the judges. In addition to the constitutional violations, the Department of Justice prosecutes laws, law enforcement officers for related instances of obstruction of justice. This includes attempting to prevent a victim of, or witnesses from reporting the misconduct, lying to federal, state, or local officials during the course of an investigation into potential misconduct, writing a false report to conceal misconduct, or fabricating evidence, or keeping my ethics complaint out of the newspaper.
PD Vorus?
I think this community knows that I've had everything I own taken away from me. The door was locked, the keys, the locks are changed, and I had a half hour to vacate my, the home I've been in for the last three years. I have absolutely nothing except what I'm wearing and what's in my car. That's the only thing that I have. And that's devastating. But that followed, after my car had been shot at with an assault weapon on Albany and Henry Street, and blew the tire out, and I guess somebody thought that'd make a good story, and they had maybe a PhD, make a good write-up, but within 10 days, this arm looked like a boxing glove, and it was vibrating, it was hot, I couldn't stand the pain of it. It was a tremor, it was a trauma from the, having the tire shot at. And I was in several emergency care things, given medication, given steroids, given, and then ended up in the hospital for several, three times for surgery, put in isolation, and then they tell me that I'm not, that I'm not being hospitalized. I'm there three, four days, and the fifth day, they say, we don't feel like operating on you now. So here I am, going through all this hospital mumbo jumbo, and they should have had an MD on this thing instead of a PhD. There's a lot of difference than just writing something up about it. A lot of difference when you end up with trauma. And now, on top of all that, I get thrown out of my apartment, they have everything I've, I've been able to gather, just everything, all my books. You've seen some of my, you saw one of my books about the Caribbean crowd, didn't you? The, yeah, the slavers. Yeah, that's gone, and a whole bunch of other books, plus work that I've done on my own. It's all gone. Everybody knows it. I don't know how you reconcile yourself with it happening in this community. It was an assault weapon, the Niskiuna Police told me, only an assault weapon could have done that, and not any police weapon. I've also been learning things like other people that, you know, and I find out that our people and the warriors that do weekend duty get two paychecks a month, one the first and one the 15th for their warrior service. I do not have at this time, because of what's been done to me, my only income is social security, retirement, and it is less than the first check you get every first of the
Thank you. Wayne Harper?
Eight weeks, two days, picketing that Albany VA Hospital to get what I was entitled to, but so far, it looks like I'm going to get it. Now, I'm sorry the mayor left, I wanted to address him. Hopefully, he watches the meetings. I think he's prepared to let Bellevue go, the Bellevue neighborhood go the way of the rest of the city. I had been calling about code enforcement, making complaints about a residence that was in a fire, a major fire, the roof was taken off, a lot of water went into that building, and tore down the garage, built a new garage, put a back porch on. And when I foiled to get the, and Chris Wynn, by the way, said to me, oh yeah, they've been cited, and he's been going to court and paying fines. I said, really, Chris? That's hard to believe, because I, I wouldn't think that someone that was doing that would continue to re-violate or continue to violate. And of course, there are great violators on the weekends. I guess they know code enforcement doesn't work on the weekend, and maybe we ought to get some people out there on weekends. Somebody ought to have a discussion about that, maybe the council. So, I foiled, and there's no records of any inspections at all, so far. Maybe they'll find some. No plumbing, no electrical, and you know, when a, when a home is bent in a fire, they put a lot of water in there, that can jeopardize the electrical system. I don't know if you folks are aware of that. No, no framing permits for the roof, the garage, nothing. So, I don't know if this is because we're selectively enforcing code enforcement, and I don't expect perfection, but this, this homeowner's also in construction, and I see a dump trailer there, debris, he was bringing in appliances from all over, probably jobs he did. Right now, there's a Bobcat with a little front-end bucket on the front, and this is a residential neighborhood, and I'm sick and tired, and here's an address, maybe somebody ought to write it down, 2426, 2428 Campbell Avenue. And this individual used to drive a truck that said either Niskiuna or Colony, so I don't know if he works, but he backs up to the front door of that two-family like it's a park on the lawn. And I complained to the mayor, I don't know, months ago, gave him the address. So, you know, this is what happens to a city. This is how it breaks it down. We, Hamilton Hill was the first, and I lived through all of this, Mount Pleasant, Central State Street, up around Brandywine Avenue, now Bellevue, and we're well on our way. So I hope Gary watches these meetings, I hope Andrew there's going to respond to my email, and we maybe get to the bottom of why there were no permits, and, and think about permits going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Castillo?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Castillo. The last time I was here, I formally requested the removal of an unconstitutional sign regarding identification to enter this building that was posted at the entrance. I made the request because of the unlawful arrest of a citizen that invoked their Fourth Amendment right, the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and their effects against unreasonable searches and seizures. Tonight, I am here to formally request the removal of the unconstitutional executive order of the mayor that prohibits photographs, audio, and video recording of any kind in the city hall without the consent of all persons whose voice or image is being recorded. I would also like to explain how I was treated here by some of the special police officers that work in this building before the executive order was actually put up. After the citizen's arrest, I came here to address my grievances. I filmed my visit and disseminated the video to my viewers on my YouTube channel that goes by the name New York State Audit. On my visit, I declined to provide ID and invoke my Fourth Amendment right. After doing so, Special Police Officer Raymond Faffenbach rummages through my wallet and steals my private information while I was distracted conversing with another special police officer. I can confirm this with my video, as well as the city hall camera footage that I received through my freedom of information law request that I made after the incident. Naturally, I returned to file a complaint against Mr. Faffenbach, and I stopped by the mayor's office to make an appointment so we can have a conversation about the unconstitutional sign and the lengths that the special police officers are willing to go to enforce it. Again, I invoked my Fourth Amendment right to Mr. Faffenbach, who just so happened to be there once again. He turns and picks up a clipboard that had my information on it, calls me by my name as he prints it on my name tag, confirming even more that he went through my wallet without my consent on my first visit. I went to the mayor's office, but he wasn't in, so I left my information with the secretary. I did this several times, several times within a five-month span, but no one has ever called me. During this period, I have been treated with disdain by the special police officers that are employed by the city hall. I have been verbally and physically harassed by them. I have physically been prevented from entering offices that are open to the public, especially the mayor's office. On one visit, they wouldn't even let me in the building. All these incidents were captured on camera and disseminated on my channel. Why wouldn't the mayor speak with me? Was it because the citizen was acquitted of all charges when they were arrested in this building in 2022 because they used my video, the video that I filmed, the video that proved their innocence? Was it because the story I did about him chasing a woman in his car from his home to the police station, allegedly drunk, at times even crying in front of the police? Or is it because he looks at the citizen as ratchet, as it said on his Instagram post during the last year's Super Bowl halftime show, as he does, because that's what it seemed like? I can only speculate. Regardless, he took an oath to the New York State and United States constitutions when he became the mayor. How can he preserve, protect, or defend the constitution of this state or of the United States like it says in his oath when he creates an executive order that violates our First Amendment right, freedom of the press, that violates section one of the Fourteenth Amendment? All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce-
Sir, I need you to summarize, please. Your time has expired.
Yep, yep, yep. This is the end right here. No state shall enforce or any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. That's pretty much the end of, the gist of it. So thank you for your time. This is right here. You guys took an oath to this as well. Okay, not just the mayor.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment of city business closed. Any miscellaneous business of the council? Mr. Turo?
Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. I'd like to thank one of our own, Councilman John Palomini. John sits on a panel for the Inflation Reduction Act, and he spent the past week in Washington, DC, on the anniversary of the act, and did a national press conference on the economic and environmental benefits of the legislation. So John will be continuing with that, and I think we're very blessed and lucky to have John on our council and working on all of our behalf.
Anyone else? Okay, the mayor has left, so I just want to thank everyone else also for coming out this evening to state whatever your position is on our, the various things on our agenda, as other things that are going on in our, in our city, and invite you to continue to do that as we move forward. So thank you again all for coming, and with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Williams. All those in favor? We're adjourned. Have a good night.